Alright. So for everyone who's on the, on the video on Zoom, we're starting a little bit late. We were meeting with our District Eighteen delegation and the meeting ran right up to six fifty-nine. So started just a little bit late. So we're ready to start now. And we will call this meeting to order. And this is the July tenth town meeting for the town of Kensington and we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi. Alright, we'll have a moment of silence. Is there anyone from the council or online that wants to remember anyone? Okay, well, if we can just bow our heads for a moment. Okay, thank you very much. Alright, council, you all received the minutes. I did not see any emails back and forth stating if there were any corrections. So if there are no corrections, I just need a motion to approve.
Do I move that we approve the minutes from June twelfth, twenty twenty-three Town Council Meeting?
Is there a second? A second, okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Alright, we're gonna move down to the auditing committee. Susan, do you wanna?
Chuck, maybe unless the Olson and Carrie Thompson have agreed to serve again.
Okay.
We're just acknowledging their appointment.
Okay, and I believe that they're still sworn in for this period. We don't need to swear them in there because they're sworn in for the year, or should we swear them in again?
Maybe sworn in again.
They have to be sworn in again.
Okay, so we'll need to do it before the audit meeting, the next audit meeting.
I think they're still alright for that meeting.
Okay.
I'll check it.
Okay, let me know. Okay, council, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Okay, alright, number two, council committee assignments for the fiscal year. At our organizational meeting, we went down through the list. Pretty much, we stayed with the same. Thank you. Assignments and the only difference would be, I'll go over really quick. It will be in the summary. Auditing Committee, Nate and Anne. Board of Elections will be Darren. Ethics Commission, Connor, Greenscape Committee, Anne. And Development Review Board, Connor and Darren. Mobility and Traffic Committee, Nate. And then Darren will not necessarily be a co-chair, but he's gonna join the committee. As a co-chair, okay. And then the pedestrian, he would be a co-chair. We do have a chair that's resident.
For the pedestrian.
For the pedestrian bike, yes. But as far as the council's concerned, we'll have, our representation will be Darren and Nate. The pedestrian bicycle access safety working group, Nate. And was Darren also in that?
This is the one that we said he would not.
He would not, okay. Okay, that's the one that has, has actually a chair, I'm sorry. Sustainable Kensington, Nate and Anne. Business Community Liaison, Connor and the MCPs liaisons, Anne will join Connor on that one. Okay, that will be in the summary. Alright, um. Sustainable Kensington, Nate or Anne, you wanna bring that up?
Do you wanna go?
Sure, so I'm pleased to report that thanks to a lot of hard work from a lot of town committee members and town staff, in particular, I wanna thank Alex Marini. We submitted our application for Sustainable Maryland Certification for Bronze Certification on June thirtieth. Are going to hopefully get some feedback soon. There may be some updates that need to be made before we get a final response. In the meantime, the committee plans to reconvene in September to start focusing on the items that we know are gonna require work that we pre, I think it was, was it the June meeting or the May meeting? The May meeting, we shared priority plans for the coming year. Some of them we'll be talking about tonight when we get into discussing the Town Hall Energy Audit and HVAC system. So that's the gist of our update.
Okay. Nate, you have anything to add to that?
No, just tremendous thanks to everybody who participated and pushed that over the finish line just in time.
Okay, well, I complimented you all before. I'm gonna do it again because this is a great tribute to all the hard work that you guys put into it, as well as staff and our residents because a lot of communities have not gotten that far and they've been, you know, applied for years ago, so. Great job. So, alright, so we will go around and ask each council member if they wanna give an additional report. Darren, start with you.
Well, I did attend the MML conference last week. Nate and you. This is, it's a, it obviously is an expense to the town to send us, but I think you could work together with the other municipalities and hear what each of them is doing and what lessons they've learned. It's a valuable response. And so I could just get this in with a good network. That's all.
Okay. Anne?
Just wanna reflect on the town's second annual Juneteenth celebration that happened on June seventeenth. We had tremendous show of support from the community, both in terms of sponsorship this year, but also participation. We had a lot of civic groups, history groups. We estimate that twelve hundred or so people came through over the afternoon. We saw a lot more engagement with the history groups and the civic organizations this year. We got great, in fact, the community survey that we did, the people who participated. Eighty percent who responded said they learned something new about our local history from being there. So that was a great finding. And I wanna thank the town staff for everything that they did to support it and make it possible. And we look forward to having another successful event next year. The Racial Justice Committee is also planning to do a back-to-school block party. Either the weekend before school starts or the weekend before that in August. We're looking at dates now, but that will be at plan would be to do it at Kensington House Lawn as we did before as a way to bring the community together. And we'll be sharing updates on that with all of you.
I have to say on the Juneteenth event, that is probably one of our largest events that gets the most volunteers. So, I mean, which is, is a, something to applaud because it's really hard to get volunteers today and that people seem to come out, which is great. It would be nice, though. I know you guys had a debrief that a lot of, some of the people weren't available to, would that, could that debrief be at a racial justice committee meeting, maybe some of those findings? Then you can catch some of the people who weren't able to, to be there.
We did document, I documented some of the highlights in the minutes, but we have a more in-depth document that we just need to clean up a little bit and we'll share that out.
Right, great, okay. I mean, this, I mean, it was a great event, but there's always things to improve on, so yeah. Actually, I had a, a group that was meeting at the church today with our organist. It's a African-American singing group. I was thinking, gee, I wonder why we never thought.
There you go.
Put them on the list. I know, I know. So I'll, I'll get more information on them. So maybe get them booked early. So anyway, okay, Nate?
Um, so do you want me to do the ULI?
Yeah.
Quick update, okay, so we talked about it before in previous the council meetings, but we have Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel process that is gonna be playing out this week on Wednesday and Thursday where there'll be nine, I think, experts that they've brought on. From real estate developments, traffic planners, pedestrian bicycling experts. Bro, just broad economic development and land use, some finance people about how to repurpose the, or re-envision the Summit Avenue Extended Project and the area around which it will create the development area, the wedge between Connecticut Avenue and Summit Avenue. And then also dealing with the pedestrian bicycling challenges and thinking through new solutions there for traffic movement, walking and biking. So it'll be focus groups happening with some of the people in our town over the next two days. On Wednesday, on Wednesday, Thursday. Just a heads up to everybody about that. Anything else?
Not on the ULI.
Okay, so weather look okay for Wednesday, Thursday?
It looks really good, hot, but really good. There'll be a walking tour where they go out and
we strategically set it up so that we will cut as much of the walking down. I mean, Alex and Matt and I did a pre-walk last week. We kinda know the timetable that we need. This helps, but.
What crew out there? Is there a water station or anything?
Just encourage people to take water bottles.
Okay.
And we will do our best as we learn, right, Alex, to, there are places to stand in the shade and not the sun. We need to do that.
Okay.
We didn't do that last time. You stood in the sun a lot. Well, that's my fault.
Okay, that's alright. Excellent. Anything else?
Not for me.
Uh, just two. One is, I tend to, Fourth of July Bike Parade because I have many kids. And it was just, again, just fantastic event. It may have been one of the larger ones that we've had. Nothing but kudos. Big, you know, I just wanna say thanks to the town staff for all of their help. Make sure the roads were clear with the event. Mark Hudson, Val and Martha Deal for all their support and help. George Papafotos who came out at the eleventh hour to help make sure the banner was up right in time for, for the event to happen.
We've added a banner and some flags.
Some flags, obviously KBFD for all their support and bringing the truck and the apparatus.
But just a correction, we need to thank Kensington Volunteer Fire Department for, for getting the Burtonsville Fire Department over there to provide the truck and the ambulance. There was a death in the Kensington Volunteer Fire Department's family and they were busy with their apparatuses elsewhere. So thank them for making sure we had a fire truck that day to, to lead the parade.
And then maybe, maybe most importantly, to the mayor for stepping in with more ice cream funds.
The great thing about being mayor is you could authorize the expenditure of more ice cream.
So it was, I am still hearing from more and more neighbors and other people who in the greater Kensington area who just, they just love the tradition and there was a lot of fun. So, our next update is just latest week, Tracy and I will meet with a couple of different park vendors to look at St. Paul Park. We're starting on the concept of making it ADA accessible for kids with disabilities and make it more of an inclusive park. So we're just beginning the work of gathering information on what the scope of that may be. Leading in, in a volunteer capacity is Beth Ward, resident on the north side. So as we learn more, we'll bring that back to the council. We're hoping to put it in as a grant of the community parks and programming with the help of Susan. That timetable is August.
And our District Eighteen offers some other suggestions.
I forgot to mention when I was at MML, the MML conference, I met someone who's potentially interested in a yeah, they have a client who might do a private donation to a park in our area.
Really?
Pass along the information.
Wow.
Yeah.
We'll take it.
I know.
If it's possible, but I can, I can give you the guy's part.
Okay, that's great.
How does it feel?
Okay, I'll just add on to the I think MMC was out in taking a video of the, of the different municipal events on the Fourth of July Bike Parade and they put a little, it all together. And it's kind of fun to see the number of municipalities that have these types of events and how they differ just a little bit. So I will make sure that Kieran or Alex, make sure that loaded, loads up on our webpage and we'll add the Juneteenth event as well on the, there's a video thing to click on. So it's, it's nice to, to do that. I think I don't have any, I went on to MML and I found it very useful and, you know, having gone now quite a bit. I think the best thing about it is building the relationships with the different municipalities and so because it is really helpful to get tips and to get assistance from some of the, the larger municipalities as well as ones that are our size. So anyway, they had a really good program. Um, okay, so we will, is anybody on the screen or here in the audience have any questions to any of the reports? Okay, let's see any hands. Alright, so we'll move on to the town manager and staff.
Mayor Council, we notified the residents on Oberon, Kensington Parkway. We, in St. Paul about the lane, the proposed sidewalk along Oberon Street which connect Kensington Parkway, St. Paul Park. We've done a number of surveys, worked with our contractors. But we're not quite there yet and we have a few other projects that we're ready to move on. So we've notified them that we're gonna delay this and return back in the spring. One of the projects that we're pivoting to quickly is improvement to the intersection of St. Paul Street and Flyers Mill Road. We received quite a bit of feedback on that intersection, mostly vehicles not stopping at the westbound stop sign, some issues with pedestrians in the crosswalk. So we're looking to clean up that intersection. We're planning to add a bump out on the fourth east corner of the intersection where the civil areas live and squaring off the, the existing crosswalks. And then we'll be adding a flashing stop sign for westbound traffic on Flyers Mills.
And, and explain what the flashing, the difference between the current flashing signs and this particular flashing.
The current flashing stop signs that we have right now are flash constantly. The new ones are radar detected, so you can set them. Example we got was with the town of Chevy Chase. They set it at one mile an hour. So once a vehicle approaches, it will begin to flash instead of having it flash at all times, which is something we got some feedback on within the community.
Okay, um, before, before you go down to number three. We, we will be sending out notices to everyone on the north side regarding the, particularly the St. Paul intersection as well as some stormwater management information that will be also work that'll be done soon. So the staff will be sending out a letter and we're hitting everyone on the north side?
Yeah, the, in addition to this project, one of the other ones we're looking at short term is adding a storm drain to St. Paul from University down connecting it to where it already is at the intersection. So there'll be some test bits, there'll be some work. So everyone will be getting a notification as we try to clean up some of the stormwater issues on St. Paul, McComas.
Okay.
Pretty much.
And I, I know it's hard, but the letter should express that these projects take certain amount of time. So you may not see something and then two months later you do. So just try to, and to please share with everyone in your household. If you open the letter, please make sure everyone in your household, your adults get to read the letter. So before going to number three, is anybody on the, in the audience or on the call have a question for one and two? You, you're gonna have to go to the yeah, I know. But that's for the record. Yeah, just your name and your street, not the address, just the street.
Sandy Henny, Madison Street. Where exactly is this bump out again?
Hi Sandy, um, so at the intersection of Flyers Mill and St. Paul.
Okay.
It would be in the northeast corner. So if you know the civil areas.
Are they the ones in the houses for sale?
Uh, no.
No.
Crossfire from that.
That's the southeast, so just across the street would be the north.
The civil areas have a driveway apron on Flyers Mills kind of further down. So what we're gonna do is add a bump out from that location to the intersection. The street width right now on that lane, the westbound lane is sixteen feet. We're gonna bring it down to, we're gonna bring it down to ten feet, which will narrow the lane and allows to move the stop sign out. And then what we'll do is we'll straighten up the crosswalks. So there's a better visual sight for motors and pedestrians crossing. There are improvements for both, again, motors improvements to slow people down, make sure they're stopping at the intersection and then make it easier for pedestrians to cross at that intersection.
Yeah, you know, that's probably a good idea because cars go up to that intersection and actually make two lanes. For those, you know, who wanted to right, they'll squeeze in there. So, okay, thank you for sharing that.
Okay. Alright, I don't see any hands on the TV screen, so we will move on. Number three.
Um, we had a town energy audit done on behalf of the Montgomery Green Bank. It was in the public documents. It's also into the council. They made a number of recommendations for us. Councilmember Angle and I are gonna be meeting with them. We just get, we said a date on that yet?
No.
I don't think we have. We'll be meeting with them to go over the energy audit and kind of discuss some of their recommendations that they made for Town Hall and how we can improve our energy consumption. But we'll report back on that in August or September. Depends on when we set the meeting.
Okay.
With the Spectrum team.
And, and the information is available in your packet online, so. And if for any reason you need it printed, it's hard to read on, just ask staff and they can print it out for you. I think we have some here if, if somebody wants to pick some up.
Yeah, there's a number of recommendations for the voting, mostly containing lighting and HVAC systems. And some cost analysis on, on making those changes. But once Councilmember and I have a chance to reach back out to Spectrum, we'll report.
Okay.
In like, is it probably August or September?
Okay. Any questions from the audience on the audit, on the energy audit? Okay.
I just have one question. With what we know now, with just the recommendations, do their recommendations take into account the historic designation?
So they are familiar with it. The, the only main issue was with replacement of the HVAC system in the drill hall that they're familiar with. We got some feedback from General Historical Trust of what could be visible from the street and on. We've already cleared with them the possibility of adding solar to the roof. When I say the roof, I mean where the offices are only not, not the roof. So that has been cleared by General Historical Trust and Councilmember Angle and I discussed that with, with Scott with Montgomery Green Bank. And he had sent us some information on possibly some grants that could evaluate that for us further.
And actually, we're gonna, they're giving us in-kind support through the Green Bank to do a preliminary evaluation of the solar. I think we may meet with Cindy from the Green Bank on Friday.
Okay.
I'll, okay, yeah, I think you're with them, but so that'll be a preliminary analysis.
Will the solar go on the drill hall roof?
Yeah, on the north side.
Yeah, just where the offices are.
Oh, where the offices.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, yeah, cuz the drill hall roof is like this.
And it's very thin.
Thin.
Which is one of the recommendations to, like, interior.
Installation.
Yeah, insulation, so.
Yeah, might help with sound.
That was one of the things they said, although I don't know the cost. There's some of the costs in there that, and that's something that Nate and I are gonna have to talk with Spectrum about. See how realistic some of these changes can be for us.
Well, yeah, and the length of time it takes to get the grants to, to actually do the work.
I will point out one thing, though, the Habitat proposal for the, for the detailed research back study is would be funded. We've gotten the funding already for that from the Green Bank. But we've got that committed to do that analysis. I guess the question maybe is the next point you're gonna raise and do we go forward with it given that the rough estimates that are in the audits?
So, yeah, that's one of the questions. I mean, we did get another price from Harvey Hato. It's just kind of moving to the number four for the HVAC unit. You know, we received a prior price which was pretty equivalent to the Harvey Hato cost. We also have a rough in-kind replacement cost from our existing supplier, M4, which is probably, they're gonna revise the quote, but it sounds like it's gonna be around sixty thousand, which is more affordable for us. But this is a conversation once we have everything and all the prices that the council's gonna have to have concerning what we wanna do going forward.
Well, I think the, I mean, it's great. I know it's more expensive. But, and you can get grants, which is great. I think the time period, though, in which you have to wait to get this equipment.
So both Habitat, who is the contractor within the energy audit, and Harvey Hato has told us that we're looking at about a fifty-week first, for supply. M4 told us about six to eight weeks for their materials, which would be an in-time replacement.
Right.
So once we have everything and all the pricing, we'll come back to the council because we're wanting to have a conversation on how we, how we proceed.
Okay, cuz I mean, in-kind would probably last you twenty years, but if you waited a year and you got this other system, would, how much would it save you and especially if you're getting the green?
The question is
the grants.
Not having heat over the winter and how that would affect the playing groups, you know?
Right.
So it's, it's something we're gonna need to talk about once we, you know.
And, and when we say heat, we're only talking about the drill hall. Just to be clear, the other rooms have heat, so heat. And right now, the drill hall has air conditioning, so it's really only affecting heat. So just make sure people know we're not making the staff work in a cold building or a hot building. We're good there. Okay.
I had a couple other things I wanted to add.
Okay.
That's a very quick question on the on this decision for the HVAC system. Are we going to ask Habitat to do the study first? So we have the numbers?
We need to have them do it, yeah.
Okay, so we follow up and just say, go, go with it. Alright.
And that's the one that the Green Bank is going.
Yeah, it's twenty-six thousand or whatever on page.
Yeah, I'm not ready to act on it tonight, so hopefully they can have that done by our August meeting.
Yeah, well, we can ask. When we meet with, yeah.
And, and what would you anticipate if we were, I think one of the theater groups has already been told that there would be no heat in the building for October. Is that correct? I mean, I, I think, I know we have things pretty booked up through September, which shouldn't be a problem. You know, the train show and then of course the Labor Day, but it's always hot Labor Day. I don't think we have to worry much until October. And then pretty much just shut down the room for the rest of the year?
Yes, possibility for us to.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Huh, Kensington are nice.
So, I'm sorry, maybe I missed this in the numbers, but we're, we're talking about to replace it with the heat pump system. We're talking about almost a year of delay before the equipment would be available. We're talking about a cost of between two hundred fifty thousand dollars and three hundred thousand dollars. And then the alternative to that is do an in-time replacement, which is basically what we have where the timing is six to eight weeks, that it costs about sixty thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay, and so.
What time, do we actually know that that is a solid proposal? Because they haven't, they didn't even come out and look.
So they gave us a proposal for around fifty thousand dollars. They, they told us they needed to revise it. They was, I was hoping to get it today. I don't have it yet. So maybe I'll get it tomorrow from that court. But I don't think it's gonna be that much more. It's probably gonna be in the sixty. There's some duct work. That's what they told us. They need to repair some duct work on top of the systems. So.
But then they have to remove the whole system?
I don't know.
Okay, I thought you said that he gave us the, the quote without looking at the system again.
Yeah, this is probably a little preliminary, putting us on the agenda. I was gonna have the M4 tonight, but we already did have the energy audit, so I wanted to put it out there. But like I said, we are not ready to act on this tonight.
I mean, other than being all natural gas for the heat. I'm assuming it's better than the, the system that was twenty years old. So I mean, as far as efficiency, I would think it would have been proved.
Yeah, and that system was thirty years old.
Thirty?
Thirty years old.
Okay, certainly got our money's worth out of thirty-year-old equipment, so.
Just the last part of my question then is if we are trying to evaluate, which seems like a tough choice, or maybe not a tough choice between the two systems. Are, will we get information on sort of what the
Savings would be?
Savings of the three hundred, two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars system would be and what the, you know, life savings would be.
We can definitely get that in the Habitat quote. I don't know Harvey Hato or the other firm that gave us the preliminary quote last month would be able to do that.
But it's using less gas, but more, cuz the gas only comes in if it needs to, right? If it's like super cold, so you're using actually more electricity.
Yeah, so the gas would actually work as an auxiliary. Even, that was kind of what the Hat Tech gentleman was telling us too, that they were still looking to use gas as an auxiliary.
Right.
Harvey Hato kind of said the same thing, but it has to reach a threshold for that to kick in. And, you know, I mean, it's the mid-Atlantic. And, you know, I mean, it's the mid-Atlantic, once we have a really, really cold winter, you know?
Like last year, we only had about a week of worth, really, really cold weather.
Yeah. So these are things we'll need to discuss and evaluate, I just don't have all the information.
No, I understand. But it it is a decision to make, though, cuz that, I mean, there's a big, but a lot will depend on the grants you get.
And are there grant opportunities in the form of this, and if there aren't, you know, um
To at least get it down to a hundred thousand.
Solar is probably the better option for us to focus on, you know, for the building than maybe this.
Uh huh.
You know, it's something that we'll need to talk about.
Okay.
Do kind of off Darren's question, with the windows that they're proposing to do historically um, appropriate replacements, if we were to go forward with that, do we have any idea of what the potential energy retention or, like, what improvements are we making around the building that then our total use of either gas or electric would go down and we get a better sense of like the total lifetime cost of these two? It's a page for table, the table on page four. And that's what I'm a little confused about, because I'm seeing the number five hundred thousand for the HVAC? When, when, when you just mentioned three to three?
Well, that's what Hato, Harvey Hato had three hundred.
Outside of habitat, we brought in two other firms.
The same type of?
For the same transfer over to a heat pump type system.
All right, gotcha.
So habitat uh, obviously has put a little more effort into this.
Okay.
Um, they're doing a full analysis based off the Montgomery Green Bank. Funding.
Okay.
What's that? Summary table, if I'm reading it right.
Yeah.
It suggests a hundred and fifty-eight, six-year.
Return period for return on investment.
How many years?
Fifty-six.
Yeah, I know some of the concerns I had with the audit, like our existing HVAC unit for the offices is three years old. It's sixteen thousand dollars, they're recommending a two hundred thousand dollar replacement with a return of, I think, like, what, a hundred and forty-nine, hundred and fifty years?
Yeah.
So, I mean, something like that is not realistic for us, it's just not, right, but.
It was twenty years old.
Yeah, but, you know, once we have the information from habitat, we'll evaluate that. We have the full estimate from M core for an in-kind replacement, it will give us an opportunity to make a better decision on how we move forward on this.
Yeah.
And really, we need to find out if grants are available, cuz if we're willing to shut down, if you're a hall for the winter, that kind of changes what we're planning, if we're not, if the playgroups, we wanna keep them in here, then, you know, we know our answer is an in-kind replacement, but we'll have some answers maybe in August. It's an old building.
It is, well, and I appreciate all the work that you guys are doing to get this kind of detailed information so that we can make an informed decision.
Yeah. A couple other items, um.
Did, did anybody in the audience have any questions regarding the HVAC? Okay. Go ahead.
Um. Alex was able to file the SS four A uh, federal transportation grant today on our behalf, because this is for uh, engineering design for two proposed separated two, so both in east and west side Connecticut Avenue um, pedestrian pathway and bike uh, pathway uh, over the CSX rail road. Um, which will be on either side of the existing Connecticut Avenue Bridge. Um, we should know in October. Um, if we do not get the grant. There are four more opportunities over the next four years. But uh, I'm hopeful that that, you know, they'll give us the engineering design, uh, we requested one point five million dollars. Uh, Farr and Pierce, who is the transportation planning that is uh, overseeing our PIPA evaluation was very helpful uh, with providing the estimated design costs and construction costs for the project.
Is the, is the west side of Connecticut, where do you, like say, see where you would get on, on the shopping center side, but when you get to the gas station, is there?
They're gonna have to get an easement.
An easement.
The gas station, you know, we were looking at this and um the uh, meet and hunt plan had one on the east side, but it didn't address anything on the west side. Well, there's still a lot of traffic on the west side, there's, there's a ride-on bus stop there and metro, and you know, we're looking to do the seven, I haven't extended, so you know, we put both paths in, you know, hopefully we get it, they'll go ahead and design it. Assuming we get it, and um, and then if we do receive this grant you know, an engineering firm will put together the the design, and then we'll be able to go back and actually apply for funds for the construction of the pathways.
Okay, cool. That's great.
Thanks, and that wasn't easy.
That's, enjoyed every minute of it.
Well, no, just even getting it in.
This is the safe street.
This is um
Safe roads for all.
Yes, safe roads for all, so there's two separate grants, there's, there's the grant that we applied for is basically engineering and design, and then there's implementation.
Okay.
We initially applied for the implementation and we were told uh, by our contacts within, within the Federal Highway Administration that we weren't quite ready for that. They, the action plan that we were using was actually the meet and hunt TLC plan. They wanted us to use that. So it's kind of a two-phase process for us right now, but we should know in October. And like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful, I mean you know, I think, I thought the application was pretty solid and, you know, we're a smaller community and it's a, it's a project that would really help us out and uh
Their equity priority to yeah, can they are.
Great.
So.
Okay.
Uh, the only other item is, we discussed in the organizational meeting about potentially uh, moving council meetings uh, to the second Wednesday of the month from the first Monday. We just wanted to possibly get some comment and maybe do a trial in September for that.
Okay, um, part of that reason is our, our town attorney is not able to attend our meetings on Monday, she's already committed to another municipality. So it makes it very difficult when we need her to be present. Um, and also Mondays are trying to pull together everything we need to pull together on a Friday afternoon to get it out on Monday. Um, or actually Friday afternoon is, it's been a challenge with everything that's going on, so. We're planning a virtual meeting in August, uh, there will be no uh, in-person meeting, just uh, virtual. And then um, we will try a meeting on the second Wednesday in, in September, see how that goes.
That's the thirteenth, I believe.
Yeah. So um, is there any question from the audience regarding the changing in the meeting, trying that out? Okay, I'm not seeing any hints. Um.
One hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe?
Yes, thank you, no, I think a Wednesday meeting uh, date would make a lot of sense for reasons as you mentioned, uh. And uh, so, um, I see no objections to that, it might even well, maybe not, but it might even uh, stimulate turnout to these council meetings.
It could, it could. All right, thank you. Um. We also, um, we ran in, we ran over time um, in the organizational meeting to talk about priorities. But um, cuz District Eighteen came in, so I just wanna make sure, I, I think most of our priorities are the ones we're continuing to work on now. So uh, and uh, we're definitely getting into stormwater management, uh, because um, we've got the ARPA money that we need to to start spending and uh, pretty much are ready to go. So um was there anything else you wanted to bring up or?
There's nothing really new, it's, it's everything that we're kind of currently working on, um, you know, a lot of work with the town attorney on some easements to clean up some, some issues that uh, kind of lingering, and then just working with some of the development, mostly stormwater management projects going forward. You know, hope, we're, we're pretty hopeful on a couple grants that we've applied for recently. Uh, and there might be a few more, depending on what we decide to do with town hall.
Okay, and then, of course, you know, the bridges and things like that are gonna be starting too, so. Um, just for the council to be aware that let's not keep adding to the plate, let's get some of these priorities to the finish line.
But included in there also is code modifications.
Yes, yes, it is. It is in there.
Yeah, if you want.
It is in there. So um if there, things come up, yes, we'll deal with them, but you know, as far as just going out to find more priorities, let's get some of our priorities that we're currently working on.
So, and availability is gonna increase very soon. Uh, which will take some stress off some of the uh, legal issues and uh, easements that we're working on, which should provide some time for code revisions.
Okay.
Promising uh, council member for a few years, so.
Great, okay, um. Any questions regarding the priorities or?
Can I just mention a couple?
Another priority?
Yeah. So, one, um on stormwater, I think everyone knows that that was also a priority for sustainable Kensington, so we will try to have that committee be helpful in whatever way we can to support that work.
Um, can they do the pits?
Yeah. Do them. I don't know that we've got the technical capabilities.
I mean, you need to see the shovel.
We may be recruiting new um, committee members as we move into this next phase of work. Um, and then the other thing I wanted to mention is the idea that I had talked about before, which is we have work happening and lots of different committees, Sustainable Kensington, Pedestrian, um government review board work is ongoing and greenscape, and there could be beneficial um, way to sort of look across all of our priorities to prioritize further, and so I'm still interested in pursuing some type of public workshop, public planning meeting around that, I recognize that it takes work to prepare for something like that. And that we also would wanna do it in a way that would be beneficial and and provide both an opportunity for community engagement, but that we're doing it in a way that leads, that adds to getting work done. So I would like to take a little time to think through what that could look like and come back to you all and share that and see.
You do that in August or?
Um, well, I can draft a, a one-page description, yes, and have that to share for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that previously and thought maybe, maybe fall.
Yeah.
When we do a workshop, so.
Drill halls open in October.
Amazing.
Yeah, you should do it early active. Tell everybody to bring their their warm, uh, their warm clothes, uh, but if you brought a, a draft in August, that would be helpful. Good, good. All right, great, um, oh, uh, one thing I did forget to bring up, uh, did you have anything else, Matt? You're good, um, we have a um I met with Nicole Berger today um, regarding a mural uh, opportunity would be on the backside of uh, Old Town Market. And it would be a cosmic theme. For uh, kind of because of a, a particular someone who passed away not too long ago and just in recognition of his love of the stars. Um, she sent me a, a quick draft, uh, only have it on my phone, so I'll send that out to everyone and, you know, we could post that as well. But it's uh, she put that, I just met her this morning. So um, I've already, I've already had Connor uh, reach out to the owner of the shopping center and hopefully we can forward that to him as well. And um, but she included Warner Mansion in it, so it's Warner Mansion with the stars around it, which I, I, it's actually really cool.
So that's the wall, that's the wall you walk by anyway to baby.
It's a baby, but you can see it from the street.
Right.
You can't, I'm I'm kind of running out of walls.
That, that wall probably has a lot more eyes on it now.
I think so, yes, it definitely has a lot more eyes than um, the fact that uh, Jack lived on Frederick Avenue too, you know, and would come up there, yeah.
I imagine she can find ways to creatively, the security lights that are along that wall.
Well, the security lights, I actually said that she, and I'm, I'm gonna plan, I go, well, yeah, I mean, it'll actually light it up at night, which would be really cool.
Be part of the, yeah, part of the design.
The design. Yeah, yeah, so, anyway. Huh?
Never maybe.
You have an idea, okay, you tell me your idea. All right, good, so let's move on to, um, if we all good, let's move on to ordinances, resolutions and regulations, Matt?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, uh, council before you, Stephen, there's a resolution of the mayor and town council, a convention of private sign bearings to allow limited duration sign at ten eight hundred Connecticut Avenue to be placed for an additional ninety days, uh, this is in reference to the sign bearings hearing we held last month uh, for ten eight hundred Connecticut Avenue. Uh, this is an extension of an existing limited duration sign for ninety days. Um, this is the resolution that would formally approve that.
Okay. Uh, does anybody have any questions on the council? Any questions from the audience or online? Okay, let's see any hands. Uh, is there a motion?
I move that we approve resolution R dash thirteen to twenty twenty-three.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that moves us down to public appearances, it's that opportunity, oh, we have another resolution, sorry.
It was just on the same.
Oh, it was on, sorry. Had changed the page, okay, so we're moving down to public appearances, it's the opportunity for anyone uh, in the audience to bring up a topic that was not on tonight's agenda. Uh, Joe?
Yes, thank you, um, I was wondering, first of all, whether uh, the priorities that you alluded to a few minutes ago, if they're posted anywhere at the town's website, um I couldn't find them in a quick search, and uh, I, I do think that that's something that we would uh, benefit from having posted online.
Uh, all of the infrastructure projects are included in the uh, budget and finance that we approved uh, in April. They were all documented in that case, so it discussed any infrastructure project, anything from the bridges to sidewalks. Any project like that, uh, with regards to the, the legal matters with Sual, and no, they're not documented, most of them are you know, they're just easements and various um, various legal requirements that we have with uh, either residents or, or streets or something, so.
Okay, well, they're certainly be listed in tonight's minutes and they are recorded as well.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be reported in law once, once we get to that point, so.
I'm simply suggesting it might not be a bad idea to have a uh, with, at the dropdown box from the uh town government portion of the town website, to have a uh, a link to priorities, since uh, since there's some interest in getting priorities taken care of and moved on with uh just a simple suggestion to uh, to add that to the list.
We'll consider it.
You know, I was wondering.
Joe, if I can, on his point, maybe after we do this fall programming that we're talking about, where we come out with a more formalized, we could put that up on the website.
Sure.
Yep. Thanks, Joe.
Anything else?
Certainly, um yeah, the bridge is on the south side of town, uh, I just wonder if the town manager has any developments or movement to report on those uh, on that longstanding project?
No, I mean, we're working with Brutus, um you know, they're, they should have the schedule to us later this month. Um, and uh, we'll kind of proceed from there, I, as I mentioned in the last council meeting, we're probably not looking for the actual construction or fee to go out until the end of this year, maybe January. Um, and then depending on how long it takes to get the MDD permits, you know, I'm hopeful that construction and repairs will, will begin spring, summer, it, it depends on, it depends on permitting with MDD, you're, you're in a body of water that's controlled by the state of Maryland, so they kind of control how long it's gonna take for the repairs.
Okay.
And Brutus is, and Brutus is to um, deliver what, this later this month?
The schedule, so the plan on, on the process of how long, you know, once the RFP goes out, you know, the issue and so the RFP, the contractor and and plan schedule, so hopefully I'll have that by the end of the month.
Okay, I see, um, finally, I was just wondering if um, this was a big issue back in December, and there's been almost nothing mentioned at council meetings since then, but uh does anybody have any updates on the sale of the Brookside um, apartments, the base?
We actually do, Joe, happy to, happy to update you.
Um, from what I've been able to gather, the initial uh, you know, purchaser with intent backed out of the deal, but there was a second purchaser right in line that they moved on to, they're in due diligence right now with that uh, potential purchaser, that due diligence is, window is set to close here in the middle of July, so presumably the end of this week, but it, don't quote me, it could be next week. If they move forward, which um, you know, the people I talk to seem to think that they will, it would move to closing, they anticipate closing uh, over the, the six weeks through August into September, and then at that time it would be uh, available to begin leasing up, and this would just be to have it as market rate apartments.
Interesting, uh, do we know anything about the uh, the potential purchaser, not identity necessarily, but do we know anything about that?
Um, I don't know identity, I, what I was given is that they are a, this is, they are a management company, they do this all over the area, they're very well-known. But I don't know who they are, that won't become known until
The property sold.
Until it's, yeah, the transaction's completed.
Do you know of any reason why the uh, original buyer, potential buyer backed out, was there any particular reason, uh, was maybe?
Yeah, nothing, yeah, I was told nothing to do with the property, uh, and other opportunities came up that were more advantageous to the portfolio of properties that they currently own.
So we might hear something. So we might hear something next month about this?
I don't know about next, I, what we may know by next month is if due diligence, the window is closed and if it is moving to closing. So we should have that update by next month. Um, and then if so, potentially the closing. Um, because it was explained that if if everything keeps the timeline it's on right now, they're anticipating that leasing could begin as early as September. So, you know, we should have an update next week, or sorry, next month on if the due diligence was completed and it went to closing, and then in September, we should know if closing was completed and it was transacted and and so if so, by September, we would know who the management company is and the leasing uh window.
Very good, thank you. Uh, this information is from the, from the agent, from the broker or?
Correct.
A different broker.
Uh, yes, from the brokerage company.
Very good, thanks.
Anybody else have any questions? I did get, I did get, um, you know, the cleaners closed at Kensington Shopping Center.
Hmm.
And the um rumor is from one of our public works, people with a Australian accent. Who would that be? That another restaurant is going in there. He's not sure which one, but that's what he was told, so, yeah.
Were there any rumors about the cleaners finding a stuffed in all the that got lost there by one of my children three years ago?
No, there's, he was not sitting in the window.
Just keep asking.
Yeah, I will. But uh you know, I would not be surprised if it wasn't similar to uh what happened with um Hong Kong where the lease was coming up. And they want more money and, you know, to commit to a long lease, which is what happened to Hong Kong. So, and and the you know, the cleaning industry is not what it was twenty years ago.
Or five.
Five years ago, yeah. Yeah, so, you know, it's changed.
Yep.
So, uh, anyway, I was just really surprised. I mean, that literally has been there over fifty years, so it was just kind of weird not to see a cleaners there. So, uh, I don't know whether that includes the one next door, the tumbleweed. It actually would be good if it did to, you know, have a maybe a larger but um stay tuned. So should be seeing something going on, so, um. The, my source always seems to be right on these things, so. Anyway. Okay, well, if there's nothing else, um, you need a motion to it?
I need that region.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we will see you in August online.